Oh, yeah. Can you grab me one there, Hector? I just, um, I lose the one online sometimes. So you come here often? Yeah, we don't have our clock on the wall anymore. I'm gonna stop by.
I forgot my gavel.
Uh-oh.
Well, I thought it was in there.
I think they have an extra one back there, but.
I'm gonna stop by Buy Mart and get a $5 clock and come hanging on the wall. Online.
Yes, for Tora. And Tora has a three plus one.
Testing.
All right, Hector, are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. So it's 6:07 and we'll call this Urban Renewal Agency, City of Talent, January 17th to order. Roll call, please.
Board member Clark is not present. Board member Panemirov.
Here.
Board member Greider.
Here.
Board member Pestejo.
Here.
Board member Byers is not present. Board member Vice Chair Perry Miller. And Chair Erisfod.
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Hector. The next item on the agenda is speakers heard on non-agenda items, and I do have a speaker request form, so David Hoyle, will you please? It's Hoy. Is it Hoy? Or, okay. Please come forward and state your name and your city for the record, and then we give you five minutes.
I'm David Hoyle, Power Watch, 14 North. With regards to the revitalization of the grant that I submitted. Last restructuring from the fires, the only fires. I am blessed to do the electrical for the outside in the lane. And I requested grants. There was some communication problems. My understanding that there might not be funds used or, if I'm correct, an expiration fine funds for it. I just want to put it out there in front of the board for consideration again. I think I'll sit here with it because it's a bit power. I'll give you some things that would inspire it in the last year, so I want to make sure it's done for that electricity system building right now. I pay the electrician out of pockets as I have the money. So it's just a simple request for consideration.
Thank you, David. And just as an explanation, we don't engage in conversation, but I, we do have an opportunity to bring up the topic when we get to the end, end of the agenda.
Yeah.
Great. You don't, and we'll, we'll let you know if there's any outcome for you, okay?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the financials. And it's on the consent account calendar. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I would like to take it out for discussion. I have a couple of questions and comments, and I'm glad that Tessa's here. I'm wondering if we can put it on the Zoom shared, on the shared screen. First of all, again, Tessa, I mean, you, you've upped our game when it comes to financials, and we've just, you know, just never failed to disappoint on the quality of your financial reports. How do you have it?
It was here when I came in.
It was?
Yeah.
Maybe I'm just not, maybe I'm.
I think Hector just likes them best.
Yeah. Like. I mean, I'd be happy to read it off of your screen, but. I just have a couple of questions. It's where you really don't have to share it if I can just read it off of his. If, if, did you get it? Yeah. Um, so at one point in time, we talked about retiring the, or, you know, we're paying back the $700,000 loan. Um, you, do you remember that conversation? Yeah, and we were talking about like paying it back and then just like closing the loan.
Yes.
But we, did we actually take, bring that to a decision? Like, I can't remember if we actually had a decision on it. I asked a member Panamorif too, and I don't think we brought it to a decision.
I don't think so. I probably didn't just do it with your chair meetings and had more than my other bond around here.
Yeah.
But if you look at the budget to action, it was budgeted to seven hundred.
It was, it was budgeted to pay off that loan? And what, that was in 2022? 2023, but the loan is still active, is that right? Right, and I think, you know, I think, I, I can't recall the conversation. I do want to revisit the conversation at some point in time, but I do think one of the things that I'd like to put on a future agenda is if we received the Tora grant, and I, I think we were sort of relying on those funds, holding on to those funds, or, I mean, I think that's what the consideration going back and forth was, was, are we gonna really need those funds? And I feel like we're gonna find out in a month or two whether or not we get peer funding, which would have really kind of funded, really kind of funds the same sort of work that we would have ended up doing with that amount. So my point is this, I'm hoping that if we, if we know that we get the peer grant, that we immediately bring that item back to the agenda for the, for a decision, not unlike how it was brought to us before, so that we don't just continue to, because I don't think, it would be good to evaluate and assess whether or not that would actually be a need. And I know if we, we return the fund, and this is why I wanted to look at it, if we return that amount, um, we'd be left with a 1.1-ish balance, right? And, and then, and then whatever the peer funding provides for, yeah, prepping that project for the community vision.
We also receive a nominal amount of tax setting on the annual basis right now. You receive a considerable $30,000, about $4,000.
Okay.
You need to buy something out of the year, and this is on the investment factors.
Great. Yeah, okay, thank you so much. I, I really, what I, what I'm asking, it, and, and please, membership, members, please speak up if you don't agree. But what I'm asking is, let the peer funding approval or disapproval trigger us bringing that back to the agenda. Does that, does that? Okay.
The same peer funding out of it, you're not collecting the tax for me to pay off the loans.
Yeah, to offset the, yeah. I, you know, it's, it's tough to imagine a 1% loan, right? Isn't it 1%? Yeah, yeah, but I think I take your point, yeah. Yeah, I don't think I disagree with you. So I, I, I feel like for certain, if we get that peer funding, that really just, really just, I think mandates us to reconsider that, that, that loan. All right. All right, thank you. Okay, so any, are there any other questions or comments on the financials? Um, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to, to acknowledge the financial reports for November of 2023 and December of 2023. Counselor, I mean, Member Perry Miller?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And let the record show that Member Greider voted to the affirmative. Okay. Uh, motion carries. Item number 4.1, items from the executive director is appointment of the board chair and vice chair. Staff report?
Yes, it is at this time and a day every year that the board is to elect new leadership, or they can reelect the current leadership or choose new leaders, the chair and vice chair. The section of the bylaws is provided here, so it it would require a motion as you select who you'd like to serve in those positions to make that a motion this evening, and this relates to the next motion, which also deals with signatures on the bank depositories.
Great. Um, okay, so why don't we go ahead and start with the vice chair position? Are there any nominations for vice chair? Member Panamorif?
I move to nominate our current vice chair, remember, Collette Perry Miller, if she wants to continue.
I will accept.
Are there any other nominations? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to elect Member Perry Miller as vice chair of Tora.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Vice Chair Perry Miller to Vice Chair of Tora. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Right, the next position is for the board chair position. Are there any nominations? Uh, Member Panamorif? God, why can I not get anybody's name out?
You know, you're out here.
Yeah, my goodness.
I moved to, I moved to reappoint Chair Erisfod to the office of chair. Second.
Uh, well, we have a nomination. Are there any other nominations? I accept a nomination. Are there any other nominations? All right.
I move to appoint.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Chair Erisfod to the position of board chair. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I, I do want to mention really quickly, since we're on this topic, that are, we have a kind of an awkward bylaw that, about the, the chair and the mayor's, and, and how the role of chair changes if it's the mayor, and really, if the mayor's not the chair, the mayor really has no function at all on, on the Urban Renewal Agency. Um, I would like to revisit that at some point in time. Uh, I just, I think it would mix things up a little bit, and if there were any changes to that policy, it's, it's a weird policy, and I don't, I really don't even know why it happened, but it's, it's kind of complex, it's complicated and weird, so I, I think we should look at it and review it and see. So maybe on a future agenda at the pleasure of the executive director. Thank you. All right, item number 4.2 is resolution, resolution authorizing bank depositories and signatories. Uh, staff report?
Resolution 24-01 provides for the designation of signatories on the bank depositories for the Urban Renewal Agency. Typically, there are two staff members listed as authorized signatories and two members of the board. So we've listed here the executive director, who's typically one of those two staff members, and the finance director of the City of Talent, who's typically one of those. Uh, and we now need to designate two members of the board who we would add into the resolution before you take action to approve it.
Uh, so just to, for clarifying information, we have Tessa, who's already designated, and then we're filling in the blanks for the executive director and the two board members, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then how many, how many signatures does it take to write a check? Two, correct? And it can be, it can be both the staff members, is that correct? Great, okay. Um, so looking for yeah, input on the signa, is the is.
I believe it's typically the chair and the vice chair.
I was gonna say, is the chair and vice chair current, was it previously the signatories? Okay. Okay. Got it. Anyway, I don't think that's terribly relevant. Um, does anybody have any object, let's make this easy, uh, do, does anybody have any objections to having it to be the chair and the co-chair as recommended by, or, or as what's typical? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to add, do you need a motion to add those names? And then, no, I don't think we need a motion, we have consent. Does anybody object? And then, and then, and then we need a motion to pass the resolution, all right. Um, so with that, I'll entertain a motion on Resolution 24-01. Does anybody have any questions about the resolution, by the way? All right. Member Greider? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Member Panamorif?
Uh, I move to adopt Resolution Number 24-01, the resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Talent, authorizing bank depositories and signatories.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 24-01, a resolution authorizing bank depositories and signatories. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
So we need a roll call.
Is it, so, I think the rules are the same for, okay, yeah, I don't think so. Um, I'll, I'll do a roll call just for good measure, though. Roll call, please.
Board member Panamorif?
Yes.
Board member Greider?
Yes.
Board member Pestejo?
Yes.
Board member Perry Miller?
Yes.
Uh, Chair, you have motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is item 4.3, an update on peer grant application. Staff?
Yes, you have the staff report from Tom Humphrey. Uh, Tom was unable to be here this evening. Uh, the main focus of his activity and the agency's activity in the last month has been the preparation of the peer program grant application, which has been completed and submitted by the deadline. I understand that there is a, a meeting scheduled for February 1st to hear a presentation on the application. Uh, be ha, be happy to provide council member or board members with a hard copy if you want it. If you let me know, or we can provide an electronic copy. So we, we can use some advice on that. Basically, the application I think is, uh, discussed in more detail in the council agenda. Uh, but it, um, uh, the amount increased between the time this staff report was prepared and the application was submitted by about $200,000 based upon some updated engineering costs, estimates.
Great, any questions or comments? Well, Counselor, our member Panamor?
Yeah, just say I would really appreciate a, a hard copy if you're handing them out.
Very good.
Thank you.
Um, well, I had an opportunity to read the summary, and I, I do look forward to digging in. I did have one question. So I know that, um, first of all, my hat's off to Tom. I know that that was a big job, and I, and I wish he was here so we could thank him personally, but I know it was a co-application with Urban Renewal Agency and the City of Talent.
Yeah.
Is, uh, is there a clear delineation between the two applications, or is it just one application? I mean, like, I'm not sure how that's working.
It's, it's one application.
Yeah.
And I I, I couldn't answer the question now if it was, which entity is the lead? I believe it's the agency.
So it's the agency that's the lead applicant? Well, that would make sense. It's most of the work is on the gateway, but, um, okay, very good. Um, all right, well, again, I look forward to digging in, and, and it looks pretty thorough. And I appreciate the work you did. Uh, and are there any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to 4.4, which is professional services contract for Tom Humphrey. Staff?
This is a professional services agreement with Tom Humphrey to, uh, uh, authorize him to continue work on the peer grant application and on a couple of other projects that he's about 80% involved with. Uh, the rate that we would pay him hourly is $125, which is consistent with a similar agreement we have with them through the city. Uh, and the maximum amount of the contract value is $5,000, doubtful that we'll reach that number. Uh, but this enables us to continue to use, utilize his services and his institutional knowledge. Uh, but this, uh, enables us to continue to use, utilize his services and his institutional knowledge of those projects that he's working on.
Right. Any comments or questions about this proposal? Well, uh, I'm just wishing our, our, I mean, our, our city's very lucky that, um, that we get to have some ongoing work with Tom, so, um. I'm really excited to see this. Uh, if there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on item eight, uh, 4.4. Member Perry Miller?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Tom Humphrey.
Second, we have a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract, uh, for Tom Humphrey. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And aren't, um. Hector, are you able to see Nicole's votes? Uh, do you have the Zoom screen in front of you, too?
I look up to the, uh.
Okay, right, I just, if you need some help with that, just let me know.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, but it looks like.
Nicole, you can hear us. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah. Um, okay. All right, uh, item number five is items from the chair or board members for future agenda items. I have one. Um, so as we start to head for, um, the potential to, uh, to begin the project, the originally community vision-led project. Um, I have mentioned that I'd like to see us have a settlement plan, and I sort of put it on the back burner, a resettlement plan. I put it on the back burner as the transition happened, um, but I'm hoping we can get that on a future agenda item. I think it will, uh, take probably a convening, uh, of the partners, um, and a discussion probably at the staff level before. Um, we can really assess the, you know, the steps that it'll take for resettlement and, and analyzing, uh, housing availability, et cetera, and hearing from access. Uh, but I, what I'd like to see is for us to have a plan, uh, of record, um, so that we, uh, you know, we have something to measure, we have something to hold ourselves accountable to. Um, I'm hoping to get that on a future agenda at the pleasure of the executive director.
Yep, that's, that's. On my list.
Okay, very good.
Get after that right away. There's a, there's a, a basic concept plan in the peer application, but it needs a lot more detail.
Great, and, um, so can we get that, uh, on our, each of our agendas as an update until, until we have the plan, um, established?
Yes.
Just so we can track where you're at with it and that sort of thing. Okay, great. Any, anybody else? Alrighty, uh, written communications is number six. There are none. Um, are, is there anything else from the executive director before I adjourn this meeting?
Not this evening.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned at 6:30. We'll take a 15-minute break. See y'all at the council meeting. Boy, that was a smooth.